Hello. She. Everybody. Next, I would like to introduce Mr. Meyer. Stand there. Okay, stand there. Stand there.
My name is Eric Farner. I've been trying to introduce three of our children for about the last month and a half. They're my three and five children. Brooke, who just had her 10th birthday yesterday, or on Sunday. Jackson's seven, thirteen.
Okay, stand there. Stand there. Okay, first, form, form. Two step back. Move. Hello. She.
It's pine.
Ready?
That was the catch?
Oh, awesome.
Then, shot at the place, four, eight, ah. And four, that's the catch. So all around in your form. And so this time, I'm not two. And this is to keep it with that to pass. Keep up. Together, that's the catch. Ready?
Hey, Mike, give me your money.
No. Hey.
I said, give me your money. Give me your money. Give me your money. Give me your money.
All five of you. Try to do all five of you. We have asked to tell me, but they just tell me. But I'm trying to already invite our school to act your might here. Took it, we gave your shout.
We would like to invite everyone from Erlanger to our Marshall, our open house, April 19th at 11:00 AM. There are flyers available.
Okay, the pink cup, the pink box, red cup. And that, if you don't mind, you can count on the orchestra, hands up to the side. Ready? Stand there. Thank you.
And now, we are going to recognize our community achievement scholarship. Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill, that's you.
I'm gonna let Kathy start. Typically, when we award the scholarship, we have the previous winner introduce the new winner, and I'm gonna have Kathy read the letter because she couldn't be here this evening.
This is the only way I'm gonna get a scholarship, I'll tell you right now. Okay. Amy Kerdoff was last year's winner of the 2013 City of Erlanger Community Achievement Scholarship winner. She could not be with us tonight because she is in UK studying and doing very well. She would like us to know that she's currently a freshman at the University of Kentucky. Yay, Kentucky. Boo, Louisville, whatever. Majoring in International Studies with a minor in Spanish. Amy is a member of the University of Kentucky's 100-member Women's Choir and spends her spare time tutoring Spanish in schools around Lexington. Amy feels that the scholarship has helped her tremendously and plans to use part of the scholarship to travel next year for mission work through the university.
And I hope I don't pronounce this, mispronounce this name this evening, but our new winner is Gabrielle Noder Giacomo. Close? Okay, close. All right. Gabrielle is a senior at Villa Madonna Academy, where she has served as President of the National Honor Society, and she's also Vice President of Student Council. She maintains the highest GPA in her class while taking a solid college prep curriculum. She has been named an AP Scholar with distinction. She's a National Merit Semi-finalist, and last summer, she was a Governor Scholar. So she has quite a resume there. Gabrielle has made many contributions to Villa Madonna. She founded the Knitting Club, which participates in Scarf It Up. That's a service project to bring the fruits of their labor to the Northern Kentucky homeless population. They actually make these scarves, because I've seen them do it before, and they're pretty cute. They're pretty neat. This winter, the club was able to give away over 200 scars, and under Gabrielle's leadership, the Villa Madonna National Honor Society raised money for Welcome House by conducting ghost tours on Halloween. In January, Gabrielle organized a school-wide event called Thrift Shop Thursday. That's an event which caused more than 1,400 articles of clothing to be collected and donated to the St. Vincent de Paul Charity. Gabrielle has an extensive list of community service activities, some of which include serving as a volunteer for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Aubrey Rose Foundation, and she also works at St. Elizabeth's Hospital, aiding oncology patients. Gabrielle's educational goal is to study mechanical engineering with a specialization in biomedical study. She has applied to the University of Kentucky, Center College, and the University of Cincinnati. Gabrielle is the 12th recipient of the City of Erlanger Community Achievement Scholarship and the first to win from Villa Madonna Academy. Congratulations, Gabrielle.
Congratulations.
And with Gabrielle's consent, I will be at her baccalaureate to make this presentation to her in front of all of her classmates, so they don't have to look us up on cable and see that it's really true. Chief Arrington, we have a couple of oaths this evening.
We went through the sergeant's promotional process a couple of months ago. It's broken up in four parts. It's evaluation, written test, oral interview, and staff recommendation. We have five candidates participated in the promotional process, and I can stand here and honestly say I'm very proud of all five of them. Any one of them would have made an excellent sergeant. This board had a difficult time. It was tied for first between Jason Whaley and Kyle Rader. Jason having 15 years' experience as a police officer and Kyle Rader having six. I chose Jason Whaley to be promoted as sergeant. I believe his family's here, Candy, his wife, and daughter Lauren's gonna hold the Bible. So Jason Whaley's been with the Police Department for over 15 years. Some of his, he's been involved in Assistant Police Academy as an instructor. He's on his SRT team, Special Response Team. He's been an FTO for quite a while, and he's just taken over the new fleet manager of our fleet program. So I look forward to working with Jason for many, many more years, and congratulations.
For those of you in the audience, this is a, particularly in our students up here, this is a particularly interesting evening because we are gonna be administering two types of oaths tonight. The first, Officer Whaley gets to be promoted to sergeant, is the constitutional oath required by the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And in it, you are going to hear some language about having not fought a duel with deadly weapons nor served as a second, and that's gonna sound very 1800 of it, but I'm here to remind you that it's a reminder for today that we do not solve our problems with force. We solve our problems through the rule of law. And so, when you hear the language about oaths, that's what that means here today. Officer Whaley, are you prepared to take the constitutional oath? Would you raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible? Do you, Jason Whaley, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue as citizen hereof, and that you will faithfully execute, to the best of your ability, the office of police sergeant according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Congratulations, Sergeant.
I'd just like to say that I'm really proud to be part of a community like this. Where else can you go and see that a community takes this much time to be a positive influence on the young folks? This is outstanding. And to be a part of the public service community here is just second to none. The room's filled with people that we work with every day that have come here to support, you know, some of our accomplishments, and that's just outstanding. Erlanger's looked at not only through, throughout the region, but through the state and the tri-state and beyond as being a leader in the public service community, and I'm just very, very proud to be a small part of that. Thank you.
The next is, not only is the sergeant process tough, but becoming an officer is very grueling and very tough. It takes a lot of time and a lot of commitment. There's a lot of background. There's testing. There's physical fitness. So it's, it's, it's an accomplishment to become a police officer, especially in the City of Erlanger. And this next candidate just got out of school. She was hired in July of 2013. She graduated from basic academy. She just got out of FTO, 12, 14-week program. So now, she's no longer a recruit. She's a probationary police officer. And so, tonight, she takes the oath also. And I'm honored because she asked her uncle to hold the Bible, and I'm her uncle.
Officer Blake, are you prepared to take the constitutional oath? Would you raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible? Do you, Patricia Blake, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue as citizen hereof, and that you will faithfully execute, to the best of your ability, the office of police officer according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Congratulations.
I forgot to mention that her family also was here, her husband Chris, his mom, her four kids, my sister, her husband, my sister, her husband. I'm one of eight, so I'm glad they all didn't show up.
I just wanna say thank you for the great opportunity to serve your community and also to my family for putting up with me for so long, going through the academy and the training. I know it's been a great ordeal on the family, so thank you for the great opportunity.
Chief Whitaker. What do you bring to us this evening?
Well, we in the Fire Department have been busy as well. We too underwent a promotional process for the open position of Operations Captain and the open position of Shift Captain. We had seven applicants for two positions. First of all, I wanna thank all seven of the applicants because it was a, it was a great experience on my end, and I'm hoping that they were able to gain some great experience out of it as well. We had, not to steal Chief Arrington's line, but you know what? I was happy with how the process turned out. They go through a written test, they go through an assessment center, and an interview process, and that's how it's done. There's no personal preference. It's done on a list, plain and simple, fair across the board, and I think that was imperative, and it was a great process for all of them, and I appreciate the time that they spent preparing. But you can only make two, and I'm very proud to introduce both of these gentlemen, and I think if you see the support that we have here tonight, I think it shows you where we're headed. The first gentleman I am going to discuss is Dave McQuerry. Dave started with the Fire Department in 1999 as a full-time firefighter EMT. In 2005, he was promoted to Lieutenant. 2010, promoted to Shift Captain, and now, in 2014, he will be the administrative Operations Captain. Dave and his wife Jamie have been married for seven years. She is a second-grade teacher at Hensdale Elementary. His two-year-old daughter Riley is in the fourth grade, but unfortunately, she's under the weather tonight, so she couldn't be here. Dave and his family reside in Independence. I'm going to do a ceremonial badge pinning, and then we'll do the swearing-in.
Dave, are you prepared to take the firefighter's oath?
Aye.
Would you raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible? I, Dave McQuerry, do solemnly swear to do my duty as the Fire EMS Operations Captains for the City of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officer with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the City of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Erlanger, so help me God. Do you?
I do.
Congratulations.
That's why I say thank you to everybody who's shown the support. The guys from the department that are here to support us are, it's tremendous. Very proud of being such a big part of such a great community. Everybody's been great throughout the process. I would say the one negative is that the chief did make me read two books. Not cool, so. But in all seriousness, thank you guys very much. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Next gentleman, I'm happy to participate in the promotion of tonight is Craig Stewart. Craig began as an explorer with the Fire Department in 1999. He became a volunteer in 2003, part-time status in 2004. In 2005, he became a full-time firefighter EMT. They're paying tribute to you right now, I can hear. In 2005, he became a paramedic, and he is an excellent paramedic because he taught me everything I know as far as paramedic goes. In 2010, he became a shift lieutenant, and now, in 2014, he will be promoted to the position of Shift Captain. Craig and his wife Lisa have been married for four years. Lisa is a Boone County dispatcher. They have a two-year-old son who was making quite the noise, if you're wondering where it came from, Cameron. That's Cameron. And they too reside in Independence.
And this is one of those that just goes to prove that I'm getting older every day. Craig, you're a Lloyd High School 2001 graduate, aren't you?
Yes.
2003, you were with my daughter Jessica, weren't you? Jeez, and she was my baby, so. Are you prepared to take the firefighter's oath? Would you raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible? Do you, Craig Stewart, solemnly swear to do your duty as a Fire EMS Shift Captain for the City of Erlanger to the best of your ability, to serve your commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the City of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Erlanger, so help you God? Congratulations.
I also just wanna thank everybody for the support. I'm very proud that everybody came out to support me from the Fire Department as well as my family. And my little, little son here is being quite the handful. But I am looking forward to the new position. I appreciate everything the City of Erlanger's done for me, and I look forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Arrington, we have a service award.
Great, good help. 20 years. What an accomplishment. This next individual's coming up here's gonna receive his 20-year pin. He started out as patrolman, worked as a K-9 officer, worked as a detective. 2008, took on a project that I think the only one in our department could have done, and that was a merger of all the several dispatch, or the dispatch merger of several police departments and fire departments to one dispatch center, ours. He ran that center for six years. It seems like he's been here longer than me, and I know it's not right, because I've been here longer than he has. We have developed a friendship. When you're working this so close together, you develop a friendship that you take outside this place, and I have done that with, with Steve Castor. He even got me going to the Aaronoff Center, watching plays. My wife about had a heart attack. You're gonna do what? I said, yeah, we got season tickets. But we developed that relationship. He done a great job. He has a gift that probably I wish I had, a little bit of it, and probably a lot of the other patrolmen do, and that's IT. I mean, he, those handhelds that you carry and those iPads and computers. He knows it inside and out, and that's why he was chosen to run that dispatch center because of his ability. Steve Castor, come up and get your 20-year pin.
Wow, 20 years. It seems like I was just here for my 10-year pin, and I don't really know where 15 went, so. You know, it's, we've, we've shared a lot of adventures together, and what Bob doesn't remember is he was one of my FTOs, and that's why it seems like I've been here so long. You can't do 20 years anywhere, but particularly in police service, if you don't have an extremely strong support system. Particularly if you get outside and do special assignments, like when I was in K-9 detectives. A story that, you know, goes around my family is the day we were walking up the steps on Easter, and I was called away, which happens a lot of all police officers. So family is important in police servicing, and I wouldn't have made it here without the support of my wife and my kids. Jason touched on how Erlanger as a family and the community. I came here in 1994 from Boone County after working there six years as a dispatcher. And when I first got here, it was widely presumed that I was just here momentarily and that I was heading back to Boone County, and that confused me for several months until someone finally came and told me what the deal was. And it seemed like the people here at Erlanger at the time had kind of forgotten what the image of Erlanger was outside of Erlanger. I didn't wanna go anywhere else. I didn't wanna go back to Boone. This is where I was. This is where I wanted to be. When I came and applied at Boone, here at Erlanger, I was working at Crescent Springs, and then Chief Ripberger was gonna give me a job. But when Erlanger came and did an interview with him, he called me in his office and he said, Steve, if they offer you anything, you need to go, because the opportunities that they can give you there are far and away more than you can get anywhere else. And we have had an adventure together the last 20 years. The things that we've done, the things we've created are, without doubt, the tops in the state, as well as some places in this country we are talking about. And I look forward to see what the future brings for us working together. Thank you very much.
For those of you who are here tonight who haven't followed this saga over the past seven years, the Police Department, and primarily with the help of Steve Castor, at the request of several Kitten County cities, put together a dispatch center that served with honor and pride every city along the Dixie Highway for a period of seven years. And then, when they made a political decision to leave us and go back with the county dispatch system, he successfully took that dispatch system apart, all at no additional cost to the Erlanger taxpayer. It was all to the benefit to the Erlanger taxpayer, because we now have brand-new equipment that somebody else paid for. And that's always a good thing. Steve, you've done a wonderful job. Congratulations. Assistant Chief Wilson.
Hello. As everyone in the room probably knows or is aware of at this point, that the greater Cincinnati Norfolk area has been plagued with a heroin problem for the last several years, and unfortunately, the City of Erlanger is not immune to this. One of the problem areas that we were attempting to address due to the call volume and the buy-
violence that was rising is Greenfield Apartment Complex. And if anyone's familiar with the area, it's the three buildings in the back across from the swimming pool. It was 528, 530, and 532. Several subjects had established a criminal syndicate in that area, and there was open air, heroin deals occurring on a regular basis. Like I said, our call volume went up, the violence was going up, and it was just getting a lot worse as the days went by. We have an officer, Detective Todd Mitchell. He's assigned to the FBI Safe Streets Task Force. In conjunction with him and the FBI, we established a plan of attack, and this started to occur in November of 2013. So, with some funds that were supplied by the FBI, and some couple thousand dollars that was supplied by our Drug Seizure Fund, we had moved in a confidential informant, moved him and his wife into the apartment complex, where we began to buy narcotics on a weekly basis. We had identified eight to ten different drug dealers, just in those three buildings. And the customers, I don't, I can't tell you how many customers there were, but they were a major supplier for the Erlanger Els Mayor, Crescent Springs area, and heroin. This went on for approximately four months, and I'd just like to relay the outcome. We had several, several controlled buys of heroin. We bought ten handguns. Out of that, out of those three buildings, we had seven indictments, seven different indictments on a federal level for heroin trafficking. We had two federal indictments for heroin trafficking with firearms. We evicted seven residents, and the estimated time of incarceration for the nine folks is going to be about ninety years in the federal prison system. Now, the outcome hopefully is going to be something that we'll see for several months at least to come. Obviously, the reduced use of heroin in our city. You could walk back there at any time and buy it without any problem at all. We're hoping that it's going to have a waterfall effect in our burglaries, our car break-ins, our robberies, and everything else bad that goes along with the heroin problem that we're experiencing in the city, in the area. I wanted to bring Todd Mitchell up, but he still works in an undercover capacity, and due to the fact that the meeting is televised, he couldn't be here tonight, so. Just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. The problem has been addressed, at least a major problem. Of course, we still have other areas that need attention. We're going to continue to attack it in every way that we can to try and reduce this and get rid of it forever. Any questions?
Thank you. Good work. Thank you. And again, because we have an audience here tonight, these people are really good that you employ with your tax dollar. I mean, they're really good. So if you see something, say something, and they'll find out. And then we'll get more federal indictments, and we'll get that stuff off of our streets. Good work, Tony. Congratulations to all of everybody involved in it. And tell Todd, if he ever surfaces again, that we remember him, okay? Very good. Ms. Hopkins is going to talk about the Relay for Life.
Good evening. This year marks the twenty-ninth anniversary of the first Relay for Life, and for the third year in a row, Dixie Heights High School is hosting the Relay for Life on Friday, June 13th, from 6:00 PM until Saturday, June 14th, at 6:00 AM. And we are seeking volunteers to become involved in a team with some Erlanger employee participants. Teams consist of eight to fifteen members. There is a post on our Facebook page that has my email address associated with it, so if you're interested in participating, please contact us. We plan on having some things there for sale that evening, such as our popcorn machine, and we'll have little bags of popcorn and some other things. So please help us help stomp out cancer. Thank you.
Our last special presentation for the evening is a proclamation from the mayor. It's about preventing child abuse. If you all see the blue pinwheel artwork in the lobby, that is the courtesy of the Miles Lindeman and our elementary school students on this issue. This is a proclamation from the mayor of the City of Erlanger to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month will be recognized throughout the United States, as well as the Commonwealth of Kentucky, during the month of April 2014, and whereas preventing child abuse neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources, and they do not know how to cope. And whereas during the periods of economic challenge, families feel more vulnerable, and as a result, child abuse neglect increases dramatically. And whereas child abuse is considered to be one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families in raising their children in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among state and local government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, I, Thomas L. Rouse, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of its council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this the first day of April 2014. That's a very large, that's a very large problem in all of our communities, and we're going to bring it to everybody's attention in April. That brings us to the conclusion of special presentations. Now comes a very special time. I know all of our city council just loves it when it's time for the mayor's report. Well, tonight, the mayor's report is going to consist of reports from Mayor Jenna Moore, Mayor Lennon Stoltz, and Mayor Brooke Washington. So I'm going to start with Mayor Washington. Would you like to give your report? Okay, make sure you speak loud enough now for the microphone to pick you up.
I wanted to be mayor because it would teach me about city government and how the city works. Learning how the mayor runs the city will help me in the future when I run for President of the United States. I also wanted to learn more about how the mayor works out the problems of the city. I wanted to learn more about the responsibilities of the mayor and the rest of city capitals. I think being the mayor would be very busy, and you would have to know many things about the city. What I like about Erlanger is the parks are always kept clean, and there are many things to do. Erlanger has been my family's hometown. The schools have great educational materials and educators. Erlanger is a town where everyone knows everyone, because people move here and stay. I hope I will be able to raise my children in Erlanger, so they can call it home too.
Very good. Mayor Stoltz, are you ready? Have at it. She did good, didn't she? But you'll be great. Go right ahead.
I am Lennon Stoltz, and I ran for mayor. I ran for mayor because I think I would be a good representative for mine. I think this because I have already represented us well before as vice president and president in student government. This is important to me, because I want to make my family proud. I want to make it so that when people hear "Stoltz," they think of a nice, respectful person. That is why I think I am a good person to go to this meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Moore, are you ready?
Okay.
I'm waiting for Jenna.
Make sure you speak loud.
Dear City Council, I think we should change the City of Erlanger. What's wrong with it? Well, let's see. I'm writing why I would be the best representative for the City of Erlanger. My first reason is because I would try to help make things a little more safer. My second reason is because I would help the animal shelters by helping animals. My third reason is I will make students and schools be safe. First, I will try to make things a little more safer. What I mean is, I would make sure places like the park or playgrounds at school are safe. A couple of years ago, I knew someone who fell off the playground at school and ended up at the emergency room. If I was her, I wouldn't feel safe anymore at school. Just to make sure people feel safe anywhere, I would make the playground and park equipment safe by making a little park for the littler kids that come. Some people say you shouldn't, you shouldn't let your fears get the best of you. Honestly, it's true, but if you're not feeling safe, then your fears really will be getting the best of you. Secondly, I would help the animal shelters by helping the animals. I will help by making sure they aren't abandoned on the road. One year, this person stopped on the side of the road and threw their dog out of the car to the sidewalk. It was heartbreaking. I would like to help by giving them loving homes. First, I would let dogs or cats on the road clean them up, then put a sign up saying they are looking for a loving home. I want to do this because they wouldn't have a home. Imagine yourself without a home. You would be hungry, cold, and sad. Some people think that you shouldn't have to stop every time and keep an animal every time you see it, and you don't, you couldn't see if it's okay and take it to a shelter. To continue, I would make students and schools be safe. I would not want them to be safe. Oh, I would want them to be safe. So if someone got into, got into the school, no one would get hurt. One time, there was a school shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary. A lot of students and teachers weren't safe and got killed. Just to make sure everyone's safe, I would want to have a police officer in every school. I would want this so if someone, someone bad came into a school, a police officer would be there to make sure nothing bad happened. Everyone should feel safe in school, no matter what. Some people think, some people think that just because it happened at one school, that it wouldn't happen at theirs. But really, it could happen anywhere, not just at school, not just a school. Finally, I'm writing about why I would be the best representative for the City of Erlanger. In the future, this would help animals and people to feel safe in Erlanger. No one should have, have feel, have to feel like they're not safe or an animal to be abandoned. If you vote for me, Jenna Moore, for the representative of the City of Erlanger, I will make sure that, make sure that this happens. Sincerely, Jenna Moore.
I can't top any of that. Now it's time for the reports of standing committees. Jenna, do you want to introduce the Public Safety and Police Committee?
Public Safety, Police, Ed Camp, Gentry, Pitt, Davis. A thank you was received for Lieutenant Sims for assistance in an accident on the interstate. We just had to write this letter expressing our gratitude for how kindly, calmly, quickly, and efficiently the whole scene was handled. The folks in your area are lucky to have you, and so were we. You lived up to your motto, "Be proud, be honest, be nice." The impression you leave my last, my last forever, however true, God bless you all for what you do. From Tim and Jody Yard, South Lyon, Michigan.
The Boys and Girls Club from Tishnae Middle School sent several thank you cards from the students for our participation in their school program. Penny Justin sent a thank you to Detective Amy for a case she worked. Chief in the house.
Chief is in the house. Any questions of the committee or of Chief Aaron's? Great job, guys. Mayor Jenna, we've got one more.
Public Safety, Fire EMS, Jenna Moore, Johnson, Dunhoff, Ferguson. In February, the Fire EMS Department responded to 239 total runs. There were 77 fire incidents and 162 EMS incidents. There were five reported fires within the City of Erlanger in February. So far this year, the Fire EMS Department has made a total of 520 runs. This is an average of nine runs per day. The Fire EMS Chief would like to request a committee meeting on Tuesday, April 15th, to discuss the medical director contract.
Bruce completed.
She had a request for a committee meeting?
Absolutely. We'll set it up for the third Tuesday in April. We happen to have a brush fire over on Doe Run Lake, which is where I live, so I was wondering if I could get home this evening?
You may not be able to get home, so I...
That's okay. I'll sleep in my van. All right? We'll be here at 6:30. You and I both. You can come sleep with me.
I think you should all stay with Corinne.
Yeah.
I can't, can we get home?
Yeah, just on the other side of the lake.
Ah.
Okay. We'll have that on the, at 6:30 on the third Tuesday of the month. You want to go?
Bruce completed forty-five fire inspections in the month of February. One burn permit was issued. Two smoke detectors were installed. Twenty-five students completed public education events at the firehouse. The Fire EMS Chief would like to request a committee meeting on April, Tuesday, April 15th, to discuss the EMS medical billing company contract.
So be it. It will be there. You gonna come to the meeting and listen?
Of course.
Okay.
Chief Whitaker is in the house.
Chief Whitaker. Any questions of the committee or Chief Whitaker? Great job. Okay, Lennon, your turn.
Now for the Public Works Committee, T. Cahill, Ball, Brown, and Row Eddie.
2,028 tons of bulk salt were applied to the roadways during inclement weather events. 1,709 and a half man-hours of time were utilized, and 3,595 gallons of fuel were consumed during the season.
Hot hole patching totals for the last month of 2013 and 2014 winter season is as follows. A total of 276 locations were patched throughout the city that required 135 bags of cold patch material, which is 6,750 pounds. Work has been scheduled, scheduled as weather permits to, permits to complete more permanent repairs were needed. Mr. Bogard is present and can answer any of your questions.
Nothing to add? Nothing to add? Any questions of Mr. Bogard or the Public Works Committee? Go ahead, Lennon.
And now the Administration Committee, Burke, C. Brown, Longshore, and Izalmi.
Okay. That's up to you. Go ahead, buddy.
Senate Bill 187. This is the bill that will remove the requirement to pay court costs and other associate fees by persons charged with traffic offenses who decide to participate in a county attorney-sponsored traffic school. This change would direct impact city police departments that receive refunds?
Revenues.
Revenues.
It's okay.
From the law enforcement. Citation fee, because the fee would not be collected in any case where the offender chooses to participate in the traffic school. Lawmakers create a, create a compromise, compromise to maintain the law enforcement citation fee, while still allowing the county attorneys to charge your... Reasonable free associated with the county attorney-sponsored traffic school. Revenues generated from this fee will continue to go back to the city police departments. Thank you. Thank you.
It's okay, now raise your hand. If you'd like to ask, I'm gonna raise your hand. Raise your hand. Yes. Ask him, yeah, ask him.
Um, the kids that came here today, would they be allowed to come back next meeting?
Anytime you want to come, the doors are wide open.
That's a bad idea, these could get in here right away.
Yes, the answer is yes, we, we'd love to have you guys come to the house.
House Bill 407, sponsored by Representative Leslie Combs from Pikeville, authorized Kentucky state government and local governments to form public-private partnerships to finance capital and transportation projects, sub- subject to approval by the Finance and Administration Cabinet or the Kentucky Public Transportation Infrastructure Authority. This bill passed the Senate on Thursday, March 27th, and the House on Friday, March 28th, and now heads to the governor for his signature.
Go ahead and read this. Administration Committee.
The Administration Committee would like to call for committee meetings on Tuesday, April 15th, to discuss changes in health insurance waiver for...
We will have that, that committee meeting also on the 15th, thank you. Ms. Andres is in the house. Ms. Andres, City Clerk, do you have anything to add? Any questions of the Administration Committee? Great job, guys.
Good job.
Okay, good job. It's all yours, babe.
Now time for the Finance Committee, Howard Monk, Blankenship, and Davis.
The finance staff has been busy completing the budget for fiscal year 2015, as well as the amended budget for fiscal year 2014. Tomorrow, we will be meeting with all the department heads to review the final proposed budget. Over the next two weeks, we will be assisting with the preparation of the mayor's budget message and completing the final draft of the proposed budget.
Next week, the finance department will meet with the, with the mayor to review and discuss the proposed budget. On April 15th, the Finance Committee would like to request a Finance Committee meeting. During that meeting, we will be presented the amended budget for fiscal year 2014 and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2015. We plan to have the first reading of the budget ordinance at the, at the May 6th council meeting and the second year at the June 3rd council meeting.
That's four committee meetings we have that night, but I think we can get them all in.
Be all right.
All right, thank you, very good, what else?
Mr. Engelman's in the house.
Mr. Engelman.
Nothing to add.
Any questions of the committee or Mr. Engelman? Seeing none, Brooke.
Now for the Friendship City Networking Committee, Kyle Cruthers, Kay Cahill, and Concho.
The city of Erlanger will cosponsor an Easter party at the Erlanger branch of the Kenton County Public Library on Sunday, April 13th, from 1:30 to 3:00 P.M. The Easter Bunny will make an appearance from 1:30 to 2:30 P.M. And Goldie the Clown will have an, will have Easter games and crafts from 2:30 to 3:00. Everyone is welcome to attend.
On March 19th, social studies students from 6th, 7th, and 8th grades at Tishener Middle School were given a tour of the city building, Fire EMS, and police departments, and a bus tour of Erlanger that included the Railroad Depot Museum. Public Works, Public Works. Facility, Flag, Chip Park, and United Dairy Farmers. The group of 47 students were given the opportunity to meet EDF Vice President Angelo's Kristen, who handed out free ice cream.
That all? Is Ms. Hopkins? Have any to report? Now, let's do a couple other things. Uh, Mr. Burke, do you have any report on the Drees Ordinance Amendment request?
We, we strike that because we ended up canceling that portion of the meeting, so there's no... He's gonna get back with us after meeting with, uh, with Drees, or, uh, the community back there.
That's right, they're, they're gonna go meet with them first, before they, before they make it our problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hired, do you have a report on the budget meeting from the March Committee meeting? Bill? We have a report on the budget meeting from the March Committee meeting.
Everything went fine, thank you. Thank you.
Nikki, report on the indoor recreation zone request.
Yes, um, excuse me, our committee met with David Heidrich of the Zala Companies, and he has requested that we amend the Erlanger zoning ordinance to add recreational use as a permitted use in the IP-1 zone. This property is located on 30 Kenton Lands Road, and our committee would like to propose that we apply to the Kenton County Planning Commission for a text amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance to add recreational uses, specifically go-kart racing, as a permitted use in the IP-1 zone. Uh, we personally think that it's a good fit for that area because we have Silver Lake there, we have the library there, and so we are all for that.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That is in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Can I see a second? Any discussion? Ready, kids? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good, let's go on to the reports of special committees. Do we have a report on the Compensation Committee this evening?
No, sir.
Do we have a report from the, uh, Friendship Garden Committee this evening, Patty?
I will just report progress due to the length of the meeting.
Very good. You have now heard the reports of, of the, of regular and special committees of City Council. Undertained motion to be adopted and presented, motion, Mr. Dunhoff. Second by Mr. Longshore in a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have any reports from our representatives this evening? Of any groups, yes, Mr. Cahill. You have an, you have an OKI report for us?
I do, it's an OKI report for Kenton County Transportation Plan. Uh, they are planning an April public outreach. We've been working really hard on some, uh, issues surrounding Kenton County and traffic flow and improving that. So they will have web apps out there, and they will have a webpage, we need to get that link onto our site. And then, they will have on April 17th, two live web chats from 2:00 to 3:00 P.M. and 7:00 to 8:00 P.M. And they're looking for an April 24th deadline for input, that's also from the cities, but also the citizens in Kenton County.
What this means, folks, OKI is Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, regional council of governments, it has a great deal to say where federal road money goes. And we're putting priorities of, of, of the county, and we would like to have our share in Erlanger because we have some roads that need some help. And so, if you want, if you're interested, go to that website, get your input, contact any one of us, because we'll be setting the priorities quickly and getting them, um, to the appropriate place. Anything else, Tom?
No, that's all, sir.
Any other reports from any other groups this evening? I see movement, yes, I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Kenton County Alliance donated goodie bags to the students who participated in City Government Month containing drug facts.
Good job. Anything else? Okay, we'll go on to the reports of city operations. First, our engineer in the back of the room, Mr. Vioxx, you have any report this evening?
Congressman Bob Stubb.
Amen. Any questions of Mr. Vioxx, our city engineer? Next, our city attorney, Mr. Wickman, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Next time, we're ice case.
Ice one, Wickman zero.
Only thing I have, Mayor, is to express my appreciation to all the accommodations the city has provided our office in my absence. I have a couple of suggestions to people, first of all, appreciate all the cards and letters that we got. My suggestion is, if you're writing cards and letters to a person who's got fractured ribs, do not make them humorous. The last thing you want to do is laugh. Uh, the, um, I want to express my appreciation also to the Elsmere EMS, they were very gracious in accommodating me and my injury. Also, I have suggestions to them, and that would be to upgrade the, um, the, um, suspension system on that ambulance that they...
I'm sure broken ribs and rattling weren't good.
And finally, I'm, uh, very satisfied with the way our office continued to function. Uh, finally realized they can probably function without me, I don't know if that's good or bad. But, uh, anyway, all in all, I just want to thank everybody for everything they did for me, appreciate it.
Any questions of Mr. Wickman? We're happy to have you back. Next, our, our city administrator, Ms. Fields.
Just to follow up with Mr. Wickman, I, I talked to Kim and Christie, and they both had decided that, that they could get along. He's kicking me underneath the table. Uh, last month, we had a citizen come in and wanted to have a committee meeting talking about the tolls on the Bins Bins Bridge, and wanted us to have a committee meeting to talk about passing a resolution, uh, since the Administration Committee had already reported on House Bill 407. That 407 pretty much did away with us having the need to do that and talk about it locally, so I just wanted to make sure that got on the record so that we knew we weren't not just paying attention. We do not need to have that committee meeting.
Very good, any other, anything else, Burke?
No.
Any questions, city administrator? You've heard the reports of city operations, the Undertained Motion to be adopted is presented. Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Pitts, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. If we have any correspondence this evening, Ms. Hoffman.
Yes, sir. Ms. Andres, Becky Hopkins, and Dave Han received thank you cards from Miles Elementary School. The staff thanked them for attending their business engaged tour. They also received handmade thank you cards from the students.
That all?
That's all I had.
Any council member have any correspondence this evening?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Hired.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to read a, uh, special correspondence from people, people that folks in the United Methodist Church. Dear Mayor Rouse, we just wanted to write and express our deep appreciation for the prompt and efficient response our city EMS provided to us last week when we had need for emergency personnel. You may or may not be aware that we held, we had a gas leak in our building on Wednesday, March 5th. Our city's emergency service providers responded quickly, and were skilled in locating our problem and assisting us with the exact help we needed to control the situation. Captain Todd Schulkers, Fire Marshal Tim Dye, and all other staff that responded were very professional, courteous, and helpful in every way. We want to, we wanted you to know how pleased we were with their service, and we feel very fortunate to have such professional staff serving in our community. We have, uh, we have a huge sense of gratitude to the city for their help in our time of need. Sincerely, Reverend Mark Shepherd.
I will add to that, Mayor, that, uh, we, with the city of, uh, with the person, Fire EMS personnel, and with the, uh, response of, uh, Patrolman, uh, Kim Claire, they were able to get 37 children out of the daycare center within two minutes and get them shipped over to the disciples of Christ, so, uh...
They evacuated Grace Ajut that quickly?
Not that quickly, two minutes.
That's great.
So I want to make sure they, we were aware of that, so...
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other correspondence this evening? This is a time we reserve on our agenda for comments from citizens or, or the public, do we have anybody signed up this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, uh, we have any bids this evening?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vioxx, you have any bids?
President.
Thank you. Do we have any reports of work in progress?
A report, but I would just like to add one more thing for our committee meeting on the 15th. Some discussion over this collection.
Very good. Very good. Make a note of it. Any, any other reports of work in progress? Mr. Dunhoff?
I just want to report that the Erlanger Lions Easter egg hunt is April 19th, Saturday, at 11:00 A.M. Be there about quarter till because 11 o'clock and be gone at 11:02.
That's right. All right, anything else? Uh, is there any new business for the good and welfare of the city? Before we go to legislation, we have some special presentations. Ms. Cahill.
All right, here we go. Uh, Halana Ball from Arnett Elementary.
What are they supposed to do?
Come on down. Come on down. If parents want to take a picture, you can.
Absolutely.
Yeah, right there.
No question.
Clifton Brown, Miles Elementary. Abigail Cruthers, Arnett Elementary.
Yeah, Kevin, you're getting old too.
Sidney Davis, Lindeman Elementary. Tyrese Davis, Lindeman Elementary. Oh, come on, act like you care. Mark Ferguson, Miles Elementary. Jada Gentry, Lindeman Elementary.
I just can't help it. Lindeman Elementary is on my grandfather's cornfield. I grew up playing in the yard where the school sits right now, so...
Oh, boy.
Yay, Lindeman, go Lions!
Jamie Johnson, Miles Elementary. Nabil Izamli, Miles Elementary. Nabil, listen, they butchered your name this time. Dariel Concho, Arnett Elementary. She was the best. Jessica Monk, Lindeman Elementary. Quit smiling, no. Jenna Moore, Arnett Elementary. Cameron Redding, Arnett Elementary. Oh, don't you hate mothers? That's cold. Oh, there you go. That's my mother! Oh, my. Lemon Stole, Miles Elementary.
I think we should give all our participants another round of applause. They did a great job today.
I just want to thank the schools for allowing this to take place. I think it's a wonderful idea, and we really appreciate all the young people showing an interest in our government. You all did a great job.
Okay, we have one matter left on our agenda, and that's legislation. Are you ready, Mr. Wickman?
Yes, sir.
Faraway.
It's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, imposing regulations and fees on those engaged in the trade occupation and business of renting residential units in the city. By summary, the ordinance establishes a system of administrative regulation of landlords in the city. It provides in Section Three the regulations that are involved in that supervision of that occupation. There are certain requirements mainly addressed to providing safe and secure housing, and Section Three also provides prohibitions that the persons engaged in that occupation may not participate in. Section Four establishes the form and content of residential permits that are required and the process by which those permits may be obtained and revoked. Also provides for an appeal process from the revocation or the denial of a permit. Section Six provides exemptions from the ordinance. Section Seven provides for additional administrative provisions to be- that may be promulgated by the city administrative officer. Section Eight provides a civil penalty for the violation of the ordinance. Section Eleven provides the effective date of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
I entertain a motion that we adopt the ordinance and order it published. Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Cahill. Since it came from your committee, and I didn't turn my head to the left. That's right. Any discussion? Roll call vote. This is an important piece of legislation in our city.
Ms. Skidmore? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cahill? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sudcamp? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Let me.
Motion carries. The ordinance has been adopted. For those of you in attendance, you just witnessed how a city council makes a law. We just now enacted a brand-new law in Earlanger that's going to help us clean up properties that are in disrepair by requiring homes or buildings that are rented, you don't own or occupy, but they are rented to someone to- for us to be able to inspect them and make sure they're up to codes, because a lot of our properties in our town are not up to code. And you all were here tonight that that law was enacted. It's going to make Earlanger a better city, so you all should be very proud of yourself that you were here this evening. The second ordinance, Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving and adopting supplements to the Code of Ordinances of the city. By summary, the city contracts with American Legal Publishing Corporation to convert the ordinance that our office prepares to the language that's in the codification of those ordinances. This occurs every year, and simply a ordinance approving the product of the American Legal Publishing Company for the last years of ordinances.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. What that means is, every ordinance, every city law that's passed gets read in the city council at least two times. We have the first reading where no action is taken. Council will consider it till the next meeting, when we will note on it like we just did at the last- at the last ordinance a second ago. There's another kind of thing we're going to do next, a municipal order. Is it ready? For Mike Bianchi?
I don't know. Yeah, it should be in here somewhere. I'm sorry. Yeah, it is. It's a municipal order of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the appointment of Mike Bianchi as a member of the Board of Adjustments for the City of Earlanger to fill a vacancy therein resulting from the resignation of Joshua Weiss.
Motion be to adopt the order. Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion?
Is he got a clown outfit?
He might. He's got this nice long coaté now, though, that scrapes the floor when he walks, so we'll have fun with that.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What you all just did was you helped appoint a citizen of Earlanger who lives over in my neck of the woods, but he's a retired Earlanger policeman who wanted to stay involved. He's now on our Board of Adjustments, which means he will sit and listen to appeals of zoning rulings. So if somebody wants to put a fence right smack dab in the middle of their front yard, and we've got rules that say you can't do that, they can appeal it to the Board of Adjustments, and the Board of Adjustments has the right, under certain circumstances, to change things. So it's also a very important part of the city, part of the way we operate, and Mike's going to volunteer some more time. Any more legislation this evening?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Again, this brings us to the end of our agenda. It's been a delight to have you all here with us this evening. Which one of you three mayors want to call the- want to close the meeting? Okay, you say, "I'll entertain a motion to re-adjourn." Say that.
I am going to obtain a motion that we adjourn.
Does somebody want to adjourn? Why don't you all raise your hands?
Mark makes a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn. One of you.
I move to adjourn.
Yeah, I move, we quit.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? I see a second down there. Okay, you say, "All in favor, say aye."
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And if you're having a whole lot of fun and you want to stay here all night long, say, "All opposed, say no."
All opposed, say no. No.
Thank you all very much. Good night.
Good job, sir.